Yeah, right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to May 2nd's council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Brown.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
Mayor Domingo.
Here. Mayor and councilmembers comments? Are there any comments from the council? Yes, Cheryl?
I've got a couple of things. I have some questions about the food hub, like when it will open, and when they're going to get out usage guidelines and things like that. And also, when are they going to move the food bank so that the possibility of that building being leased can be pursued? Because I got the, I got a, someone asked me about the possibility of the lease on that building. So I was just wondering, do you have any information on the food hub? It looks good from the outside, but...
I believe their ceremonial opening will be later this month. But I can get more details specifically in regards to that and the availability of the other buildings. Several people have indicated interest in it.
Interest, that's what I've heard. And I had one other thing. And the last time that we met, the mayor asked for an agenda item about ADPS in the Sheriff's Department. And I've got to tell you that I've had a lot of people questioning me about why we're looking at that option. And my comment was, I didn't know we were. But I want, I just want to give you some information that possibly people need to think about. Out of the county, we have the highest number of 911 calls only behind Battle Creek City. And I'm a township, which means that we get a lot of calls here. There's a lot of new development coming in downtown. And I don't think this is the time to discuss this. I really think that we don't know what the utilization is going to be for our downtown. We don't know how many, how much traffic we're going to get. We don't know anything right now. We're kind of in a bad situation that way because we're kind of in between. There was no discussion at all about what we were going to do about fire service. We've got a brand-new hotel coming in. We have, we've talked before about the number of buildings on campus. That's a real concern. There was nothing discussed about fire service at all. In fact, the only thing that we talked about was police. We've had some increase in the serious crimes in the city in the last few months. That's another concern of mine. And the other thing is, since it kind of came as a surprise to all of us, there's a lot of citizens and a lot of officers wondering if the, at the end of the year, if we're no longer going to have a police department. I really don't think this is the time to bring any of this up. I really think we need to let things settle down. I think we need some of, to let the new developments come into downtown and see what exactly is going to be needed. I think we're jumping way ahead. We're putting the cart way before the horse. So, and as you all know, I'm not opposed to the Sheriff's Department in the least. You know that my husband retired from public safety here, but he's now an employee of the Sheriff's Department. So, please, it has nothing to do with that. So, thank you.
Yes, Bruce?
On a lighter note, I recognize that change can be uncomfortable for many people. And that's one reason why I took the liberty to go down to Michigan State. And then I went down to Ann Arbor to see the baseball teams. Michigan State was 23 in the nation, and Michigan is 16. And I was so overjoyed as I walked into the stadium. A voice behind me I recognized, and it was Chief Kip and two little boys. And it just did me good to recognize that we, as employees, elected official of the people, can go out to a baseball game and really recognize what life is all about. Chief Kip, I and the kids, we had so much fun in Michigan State, especially because we won. We were down by five runs. Next week, the next day, I went down to Ann Arbor in their country, and we beat them again. So I want everyone to know that, Jay, you got me. Go Green, and everybody just be happy and smile. Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. With regard to the AmeriCorps Vista program that will be coming to Albion this summer and for the next two or three years, I'm going to be directing that program, coordinating that program for the next year. We are receiving applications now. So if folks are interested in applying to be a Bill, a AmeriCorps Vista member in the city of Albion, if you go to the AmeriCorps Vista website, you create a profile, and then you can look for Albion under the Michigan Options for AmeriCorps Vista Membership or Service. If anybody has any questions about how they might apply for that program, please contact me. My cellphone number is (517) 414-1138. Secondly, the Build Albion Fellows had their celebration announcement dinner last Tuesday evening. We welcomed eight Build Albion Fellows to Albion College. They will be starting their year at Albion College with a retreat on June 8th to the 12th. And we just, I just found out from Len Reed that we will be doing a community service project at Holland Park, working on sprucing that up in time for summer openings, which I'm very excited about. The current sophomores, or the folks who will become sophomores after Saturday, will be starting their summer work at a retreat from May 9th to 11th. And they will be spending the 10th at CAS Community, working with Faith Fowler's organization in a couple of different areas, serving food at lunchtime, but also working in their map fa, or mat factory, turning recycled tires into doormats. So we're looking forward to that. To remind everyone, the Build Albion Fellows, all 15 of them, will be working for the rec department, providing leadership and staffing for their Summer Dreams program at the community school. Finally, Albion College's commencement is this Saturday at 1:00. So everybody in town should be praying for sunshine. That's it. Thanks so much.
Anyone else? I'd like to take a moment to thank everybody for the cards and the prayers and the kind words for the loss of my sister. Thank you all very much. There's a ribbon cutting at Team One tomorrow at 11:00. And the answer to your question, Cheryl, before everybody gets their panties in a twist, I made it perfectly clear. I was looking at numbers. Nobody said anybody was going to lose their job or anything else. I'm looking at the perspective of the money end of it for our budget for the city of Albion and the citizens of Albion. We have to do what is best for the city. Necessarily, sometimes it's not for the people that work for the city.
I am totally understanding that.
Okay. But people getting out there and saying, "Oh, I'm afraid I'm going to lose my job," or any of that, they're reading into it. And I made that perfectly clear at the time. We didn't talk about fire because I wasn't worried about fire because that has, that's all part of the numbers when we do this. So when you get people all, you know, panicky like that, then that's, you know, a little bit out of the realm. But we've got to look at numbers, too, for the city of Albion. And right now, they're not looking real good. And we have to look at possibly cuts, layoffs, whatever it might be. And it's better to start now than it is to let them know at the last minute. So I just want to make it perfectly clear. We're looking at numbers. That's all. Not jobs or anything else. I would not do that to the employees of the city. I want to make that clear. If you've got questions about what I would need to do, come and ask me. I'm the one that brought it up. And I gave everybody the opportunity to say something that evening. Nobody did, so I pursued with it. As soon as I get the numbers, I'll broadcast it to everyone. I'm not going to hide it. Thank you. We'll move on with presentations. First is a proclamation for National Day of Prayer. Pastor Amos is here this evening instead of Pastor Williams. If you'll come forward.
Good morning, sir.
Come on.
National Day of Prayer, May 5th. Whereas National Day of Prayer is in the spirit of unity and reflection of those who came before us, and where we each give thanks for the courage and compassion shown by so many in this country and around the world. And whereas the city of Albion is holding the National Day of Prayer on the front steps of City Hall on Thursday, May 5th, 2016. And whereas the Albion City Council recognizes the National Day of Prayer as a coming together of the peace and goodwill. Now therefore, I, Joe Domingo, Mayor of the city of Albion, due nearby, proclaim May 5th, 2016 as National Day of Prayer. And, Pastor?
It's a pleasure. Thank you.
I bet Pastor Amos can.
That's you doing what it is. Okay. Thank you.
On the halls and steps of City Hall.
The next proclamation is for the Municipal Clerks Week. I'll read from the desk because our clerk's not here. City of Albion, proclamation, Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through May 7th. The office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of the government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be every mind, every mindful of their ne, neutrality?
Neutrality.
And their impartiality? Am I correct? Rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk service has the Information Center on functions of the local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Joe Domingo, Mayor of the city of Albion, do recognize May 1st through May 7th of 2016 as Municipal Clerks Week and extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Jill Domingo, and to all municipal clerks for the services that they perform and their dedication to the communities they represent. So that's that presentation. C, the assessing update by Julie. You would come forth, please.
Good evening. I have the dubious distinction of explaining a, well, not, I don't even know if I can explain, showing the numbers as to why the city's values are going down. Does everybody have one of these packets? First page has an A on it. I picked up a few reports from county equalization I thought you might be interested in. You can see years 1 through 3. It was going really well before the big drop. The difference, there's always a gap between assessed and taxable value. They got a little closer together. And now you can see assessed is going up slightly. B, you can see where Albion, city of Albion, falls in line with the rest of the county on average value of a residential parcel. Then on C, a change in taxable value for Albion. You could see the real property only went down 6%, but still about, well, 4 million. And then the personal property went down 27%, about 5 million. That's because of a new law. And I'll go through that in a minute. So the biggest decrease dollar-wise was personal property. Then that was taxable value. And the next two pages, D and E, show how that relates assessed values going down. First one is real. Went from 87 to 80 million. And then personal property. And you can also see other cities on the personal property. We were down 27%. Battle Creek, 50%. City of Marshall, 29. So we're not alone in that one. Now, F is a report that comes from the County Equalization Department at the beginning, well, it's called the beginning values. You can see commercial. I highlighted 57.44%. That's where we were, that's our ratio of their studies to our assessed values, which shows that our assessed values need to go down. They were too high in commercial. Too high also in industrial and just a little bit high in residential. They are telling us we have to bring our values down. So that percentage will be between 49 and 50% because assessors are supposed to create assessed values that are 50% of the true cash value. And they're saying that they're higher. We have to be in the 49 to 50%. Any questions? I might have lost somebody.
Who sets that value?
The County Equalization Department.
And where, how do they generate that?
They do appraisal studies on commercial and industrial. They take a sample of properties in Albion and look at them and compare them to where we are. They develop different land values. They develop different economic condition factors. And they compare their value to where we are and tell us if we have to go up or down.
Compare it to what?
To our assessed values where they are. So they're usually, so in 2015, they were, or 2016, they were out looking at properties and comparing them to our, our 15 values. So they're behind. This last year, we were working on... Excuse me. They compared their studies to what we set for 16. I'm in 17 right now. So the values that we set last year for 16, they look at during the year and compare them to their, what they think buildings, land is.
Right. So the concern I have is that we're responding to someone's, apparently, from my perspective, an arbitrary evaluation.
Arbitrary?
They're saying by picking and choosing properties to compare us to, and then setting a value of property based on some formula that I don't know. So until I know that, I'm going to say it's arbitrary.
Okay.
That, that then, then your office then responds to some outside force establishing that. So I would say that assessed value is a function of how much has been sold, how much has been bought in comparison to not only our community, but other communities.
Yep.
And...
They do sales studies.
And if nothing is sold, then that by definition means that the value is less.
Not necessarily. We have to go outside the city to find sales.
Right. No, I understand. I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I'm just the guy who lost $20,000 in value on his house for no apparent reason. And then I came and argued for it, and it went back up.
Right.
So I'm, again, I wonder where the arbitrary value came, if people are not actually doing assessing, going to a property and saying, "Well, I think it needs that and that and that, and this is what I think it's valued."
They do that.
Or they can look at...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they didn't. Not with my house, and yet...
Oh, 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 well, this is commercial and industrial.
Well...
They go to the property.
But you said the same, but you said the same thing about residential.
Residential, they use sales. Only sales. They don't come here and look at buildings.
Right. So why not, is my question? I mean, you're, you're the messenger. I'm not blaming you.
No, no, I understand.
So...
Because there's so many more sales in residential, you can get an idea of the market. Pardon me?
Actually, in Albion, there aren't that many.
Well, I...
Two years ago, when we did the assessment, there were three.
I had 121 sales this year in residential, and I could only use 20.
Right.
Because we take the sale price minus the value of the buildings and come up with a value for land. They were all negative. So I couldn't use it for land value.
Right. Because someone else established what the land value should be or the building property should be.
Equalization has a big influence on it.
Right.
Yes. And you don't even know who the person is that's going out?
That's right.
And it's a lot of opinion.
That's right.
There's a lot of opinion in it. Yep.
So maybe what we should do is have that person come to the council.
They do give us their, their development of values, which I can provide...
Oh, I know. I'd like a person, actually.
Okay. Judy Nelson is the Equalization Director.
Can you clarify what the difference between real property and personal property is?
Real property is land and everything on it, like houses and garages, anything attached. Fences are attached. Personal property, it only applies to commercial, industrial, utilities. That's the equipment, all the things in the building that they would probably take with them if they moved. You have a good point. I used to work in equalization. I thought, how can I tell these assessors this? They know their area better than I do. That's just what's been developed. So, whoops. So we're at the, they call this the 4018, the F. I'm sorry. Yes.
For the layperson that's listening on TV, I've been contacted also. Correct me if I'm wrong. The real definition of personal property is their home or the building on their property that's being assessed?
That's real property.
Okay. I thought the real property was the items inside.
Personal.
You got it exactly backwards.
I got it backwards.
They used to tax people on personal property. In the house.
So the people on TV, the, the personal property is stuff inside structure, you're saying?
Commercial, industrial, utilities.
Okay.
Businesses.
And their personal property is the home? No?
No.
No. Real property is anything that's attached to the land.
Okay, garage.
Right. Swimming pool. Fence. Driveway. Personal is desks. Machines. Phones, computers.
And that does go to a home?
No.
Oh, just business?
It's only businesses and utilities.
Thank you for clearing that up.
You're welcome. So we're still on F here. This is, the front page is just real property. And then the last form, G, these percentages on F transform over to, transfer over to G. I highlighted them. Let's just go through commercial. We start at 57.44. Then there's losses. Losses is removal from the tax roll. Either they, we change from commercial to residential, or something burned down, or the property went to the county or the city or the land bank that's not taxed. And you can see the commercial has $3 million in losses. Then there's a subtotal. Then there's an adjustment. The adjustment comes from the assessing department with the sales. Coming up with new land values and economic condition factors. So that we get it down between 49 and 50. And you can see there, it's, it's in that place. The new, there was 1.3 million of new. That's new construction or coming back on the tax roll, perhaps from exempt property. So as you look through the industrial, there wasn't much loss, not much adjustment. Residential, at a million-dollar adjustment to bring it down between 49 and 50. So we need to do that every year to get it 49 to 50. Or we will get a factor by equalization to bring it either up or down. And the factor would apply to all the properties in that class.
Right.
It'd either bring them up or bring them down. So we always want to get between 49 and 50. Last thing is on the back page, this personal property. I highlighted the industrial personal. You could see last year, there was $12 million. And now it's 5.8. The Michigan government lately has been working to reduce taxes for businesses. 2013, they started with small businesses that have under $80,000 in true cash value of personal property. They can send in an exemption form and not have to pay taxes. But they have to send the form in every year. And that caused a big cut in taxable value in a lot of jurisdictions. And now this year is the first year in which industrial prop, industrial personal property that's used for manufacturing is starting to get an exemption for everything that they purchased before 2006 and after 2012. So they're still paying taxes on that. But if it's industrial manufacturing, that tax is now not being seen here. It's called an essential services tax, and the state is collecting it. And the only thing that will come back to the city is money for essential services, fire, police, and all the other taxing units, schools, everything. So that's why there was a big drop, Cheryl. It's the first year. And they're going to slowly bring in the years 2007 until they're totally exempt from regular taxation by the unit. And it'll go to the state for the essential services tax. So that's why there's a big drop in that.
I have a question, the essential services. Is that something that would be specifically to pay for the department and the fire department?
Mm-hmm.
Street and road also?
Oh, yeah. All central services that a city has.
So we actually aren't losing revenue then? It's just being, coming in? But if we're still getting the money from the state?
It's not the same amount.
Okay.
You don't get city operating?
Pardon?
You don't get city operating?
No, I was saying...
Not going to get library?
No, for roads, if we're using the money from them, say that you have a coffer, and I'm trying to understand this. We have a coffer, so we're getting money from the state to pay for roads, what else did you say, for?
Fire, police.
Fire, police, stuff like that. The money that we would normally use for those services, couldn't we use to operate the library and everything else? So wouldn't it kind of balance it out?
No, because you're not getting that anymore.
Not getting that anymore.
They're trying to give businesses tax breaks, so they're no longer paying the sixty-eight mils on their taxable value as taxes, like everybody else does. Instead, it's being collected by the state.
I need to go back to page twenty-three, the personal property, fifty-one.
Um, twenty-three.
What's the letter in the upper right corner?
E.
Thank you.
So twenty-three fifty-one, and it's titled personal property, but the last page on number three fifty-one, it says industrial personal. I need to, I may have given people the wrong information. I was thinking that the business tax was just that. So is the industrial personal, should that be the same title over here on page E twenty-three?
The total personal on the E page is commercial personal, industrial personal, and utility personal. All combined.
And the industrial on the last page, three fifty-one, pertains to what?
For the city.
Okay.
This is, um, in, there's a total personal at the bottom of the form G. The second page, at the bottom, says total personal, thirteen million eight seventy-two five. G, and if you look at E, that's the same number.
Okay, but my question is, on the very last page, it says the number is three fifty-one, individual personal property.
Okay.
What is being taxed for that title, individual pers, I mean, industrial?
Industrial machines.
Okay, so that's back to business machines.
Furniture.
Things inside.
Computers.
Okay, and the personal property is a business tax on, on page E? It's a business tax, you told me.
The total at the bottom of this sheet of a commercial, industrial?
No, I just want to know.
Is the total on this page?
Okay, I don't need that.
Yes, that's personal, yes.
And that is for personal property means business?
Correct.
Generally, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And utility.
The real property, when you said a swimming pool and a driveway being attached, like my aunt has a swimming pool, so that would be her real property?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, and items inside the structure?
Not in residential.
Okay, thank you, not residential, not residential. Okay, thank you, so.
You're welcome.
I see whether you're confused.
Okay, thank you.
Can I confuse anyone anymore?
No, you're good.
Any other general questions, not about this or assessing?
So is the bottom line, we're not on the upswing yet?
Well, this new law came into effect where they're still going to keep taking away the personal property tax that you used to get. And just, you know, like Flint and Detroit, it's really hurting them, because they have a lot of industrial. Yeah, it's hurting. But they said, you know, Michigan has too much business tax, so they're trying to work on that.
One last question, does sheet D, real property, does it have anything to do with business?
What kind of real property?
Real property on page D, does it have anything to do with business, items inside the structure of business?
Uh, no, just a business, a business building, it's real property.
So it does have?
McDonald's, McDonald's building.
So McDonald's does have real property?
Correct.
Yeah.
So you have business and you have home real property?
Correct.
Earlier, y'all told me it didn't have home, okay, I'm straight.
I thought you were saying personal.
Personal property.
Okay, real property, okay, home and business can have real property?
A vacant lot, it's real property.
Real property can have home and business?
Yep. And I would like to thank our city manager for getting our offices cleaned up. It looks very nice, stop in when you put them in. Well, it'll look better maybe next time.
Are you having an open house?
Yes, we'll have an open house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next presentation is the Albion-Marshall Connector.
So, first and foremost, thank you for having me up here to talk with you guys.
I'm sorry, your name?
I'm sorry, Josh DeSainavon is my name, and I manage the dialerite system in Marshall, as well as the Albion-Marshall Connector bus that goes between Albion and Marshall, so. Again, thank you for letting me come up here, talk with you guys today about the Albion-Marshall Connector bus, what we're seeing, what it's been doing. You've probably seen the bus running around town, so here's a little bit more of an in-depth look at it. So, the Albion-Marshall Connector bus, you may have seen some of our flyers around, sorry, this is kind of a small print there, but if you ever need one, please let me know, I'll make sure to get them to you, so you can hand them out. Our basics, as of right now, we are open Monday through Friday. Our first pickup begins at seven thirty AM, so our first drivers are in at seven AM, checking out the bus, getting ready to go, then they drive over to Albion. Our last pickup is at four thirty PM. Really, that's last call, people can call in as of four thirty. Sometimes we'll get residences of Albion that are over in Marshall that'll call at four thirty and say, I need a ride. Of course, we're going to give it to them, so. But generally, we try to stick that four thirty mark for the Albion-Marshall Connector bus. Some of the things that I've got, we do run a Facebook page. When I first got there, there was no Facebook page, and social media is a big push for me personally. I think it's a great way to advertise, it's cheap advertisement. I know our Facebook page alone has gone from zero, when I started it in November, the end of November, till now. It's not a huge jump, but we are about three hundred or so people that are following it, keeping track of us every day. It's easy for me to get messages out of, we're closed, or I put up one a couple days ago, we now offer free Wi-Fi on the bus that I got, so. You know, that's nice, people enjoy that, they get to see messages from us. So, some of the comments they leave for us on there, they loved our expansion. When I took over, I, we moved it from three days to five days a week. As you can see there on the third comment, as, in a little bit here, I'll show you. A lot of people wouldn't have jobs over in Marshall without it coming from Albion, so it's a very beneficial service right now. So, these next slides here are going to break down what the bus is doing. The final one is going to really bring it all together, but the first thing we're seeing a lot of people use the Albion-Marshall Connector bus for is shopping. Twenty-two percent of our ridership is through shopping, so they're coming over to go to Dollar General, Family Fair, Goodwill, Kmart, Rite Aid, Dollar Tree, all those things, they're coming from Albion to Marshall. We do get a number of people that come over to Family Fair from Albion, because it's the only ride they have to the grocery store. It's just, unfortunately, it's over in Marshall, so we bring people from Albion to Marshall to go to Family Fair. Our next one is medical. Oaklawn Hospital in particular is twenty percent of that. So we have people going to the Brooks Dialysis Building Hospital, Marshall Internal Medical Supply, Oling Rehab, Wicketson, and the Wright Medical Building. A lot of medical appointments are falling into this. There's also another section of medical too, that Oaklawn doesn't run, but I'll show you that here shortly. Education, this one is climbing quickly, as I'm sure you can all imagine. We do get a few people from Albion College that go back and forth. I've talked with a couple professors over there that have students coming over to do internships in Marshall, we run them over during the day. Marshall High School is climbing, Hughes Elementary, as you will see, is by far our biggest customer that we have. Middle School's climbing, Academy's climbing, and then we get people going back and forth to libraries in both towns. So, it's a, you know, a resource place for them. Medical that is not connected to Oaklawn Hospital accounts for about ten percent, so this is Marshall Nursing, Marshall Medical Associates, Medi Lodge, Pain Clinic, Tender Care actually is Medi Lodge, so I apologize for that. Fountain Clinic, places like that, they come over to use those medical services as well. The last one I kind of mixed together, because there is a bit of a split in there. Work and dining, there are people that work over at Arby's, at McDonald's, at Taco Bell, and at Wendy's. As you'll see in a minute, Taco Bell is by far, well, not by far, but it's our second most. And then work, we have people that are going to Hampton Inn, Marshall Police Department, we had a girl doing an internship over there. She started in January, rode the bus two times a day. Tenneco, as they've been hiring more and more people, we get more and more residences of Albion coming over to go to Tenneco. So it's, the service is helping a lot of people in that sense as well. So you see the previous slides, where people are going, what they're doing. This is the one that catches me a lot, is where are they coming from? People that are riding this bus are starting in Albion. There's not many people going from Marshall to Albion, you know, just on a day trip. There are some, we do have riders that go to the Bone, we have riders that go to Cascarelli's, and so on, but a lot of the ridership is coming from people in Albion going to Marshall for one of the pieces that we showed before, our previous slides. So, next slide here is just where we've gone. So, when this service started, in November of two thousand fourteen, there were thirty-eight riders. It operated three days a week, same timeframe. As you can see, it started climbing a little bit and a little bit more. And then we started getting into this area right here of the summer, going into the school year of two thousand fifteen. We were excited about these three months right here, plus a hundred, those three months in a row, that was great. And then, before we knew it, you can see, it took off. We hit two hundred and fourteen, three twenty-two, four oh nine. We dropped in November, but we've been climbing ever since. The reason I didn't make a printout for everybody of this slideshow is because I wanted to get this past Friday's numbers, to make sure everything was accurate in terms of April's numbers. We did go over what we had in March, we were five hundred and seventy-six passengers. It's about a hundred and twenty-nine to a hundred and thirty-two-ish passengers per week. It's a lot, and we are, we are stretched doing that. But it's, as you can see, people are relying on this service, and this is where they're going. Oh geez, I didn't know it'd be that bad to see up there, sorry about that. Hughes Elementary School, two hundred and fifty-one riders, Taco Bell, two hundred and thirteen. I have a feeling that's going to go down here in the coming weeks when your taxes opens, but if it doesn't, that's okay. We also have Kmart, there's these, you can't see, these are the only two addresses I added on there, twelve hundred Edwards, and then eighteen, one thirty Homer Road. This was a woman that, she works for an in-home nursing care, so she was going back and forth between a couple places, but this list here, I kept off personal addresses, you know, I didn't want to say exactly who anybody was, so. But the other ones you see on here, Save-A-Lot at seventy-five, the Brooks Building, our Dialysis Center, again, is something I think that might decrease here in the coming weeks, Family Fair, all those that I said before. So, you can see, these people are using it for work, health, shopping, it's a necessity. It's not, they're not just going over there to take a run downtown, they're, you know, using it for a need. So, here's kind of the grim parts of it. So where we're at right now, when this service started, it was completely grant-funded by something called the New Freedom Grant. Now, the New Freedom Grant was a godsend, it really helped out, because it gave us the ability to get a bus. It gave us the grants to buy a seventeen-passenger, three-wheelchair-capable bus. So the grant helped, Battle Creek Community Foundation has put towards a lot of money. They put out sixteen thousand back in October of two thousand fifteen, and just recently let me know that they were going to give us another ten thousand to keep it going. The Albion Community Foundation, Area Agency on Aging, Calhoun County Senior Millage, United Way, and then Oaklawn Hospital is putting money towards the bus now as well. They also sponsor the bus, if you ever see it, go through town, it has the advertisement on the back, so they do give money towards that, or through that, I'm sorry, as well. So, how this has all worked for us is we've used this money to keep us going. Unfortunately, that's not going to be all that great anymore, because we're hitting a point where it's, we thought it was going to be extremely expensive to run the service. So, what I found out recently in applying for MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation Grants, their fiscal year runs from October first to September thirtieth, to September thirtieth, I'm sorry. As it stands right now, to finish out MDOT's fiscal year, the Albion-Marshall Connector or the AMC bus will need to fundraise forty-five thousand dollars, and that'll help the rest of this year, as well as get us through the first quarter of MDOT's cycle. So when we do that, it then gives us the opportunity to start taking money from, or getting money from MDOT. So we get through that first quarter, so now we start to recover money. A lot of people, when I've talked to them about this, say, oh, it's simple, just raise fares. Doesn't, that does nothing. Fares, maybe will account for a few more thousand dollars, but it's really not much. It's going to account for about eleven percent of what we need. And not to mention, the more riders, the more expensive everything's going to be. So, currently, what we're looking at is to secure funding for an annual budget of seventy-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. So this was the budget that I created for the service and gave to the Michigan Department of Transportation. Now what they do is when they see our budget, they then calculate it through state funding and federal funding, and say, well, we can give you back X amount of dollars, which is generally about fifty percent. So that's where we're coming up with, this amount right here to run on a yearly basis is thirty-three thousand, zero eighty-four and twenty-six cents. So for a year where we don't have to fund anything from a previous year, then it's only going to cost, only, it's going to cost about thirty-three thousand a year to operate the service. And of that, thirteen percent of it can be from fares. So, as we get into an actual fiscal year where we're not helping the previous year as well, you can see fares will take up a little bit more of what we need to pay. So, our funding situation, as I said, we need to raise about thirty-five thousand. Originally, we were planning on having to raise a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. I know some of the meetings that myself and Cheryl, you were in too, they were kind of grim every once in a while, and we looked at it until we found this different way to apply for the money. So we have found an easier way, and I know that sounds odd, but it is easier to, probably all know it's easier to raise thirty-three thousand than a hundred something thousand, so. The immediate need, so these last two slides are just where we're at and what we need to do. As you can see, the service is used, it's important, it's growing every single month, people are relying on it. And right now, myself, the assistant city manager over in Marshall, as well as the city treasurer, we work on this regularly, trying to get, find different grants and things to do to make the service keep running. So what we need to do is secure long-term funding. Now, some of you may or may not know, there are talks happening right now about community, or I'm sorry, county-wide transportation. That would be amazing, it'd be great, I would love to see county-wide transportation come to fruition, but probably two years away at minimum. So, the way I'm looking at this is, we need to keep this going until county-wide transportation becomes a real thing. And I think it will, I really, I have a lot of faith that it will. But in the meantime, we have to figure out a way to keep this going. So, now the unfortunate side. Despite funding, as of today, May second, we've reached three months in a row of five hundred-plus riders. We've shown that there is a major use for this service. County members are starting to take notice, so that's why there is the county-wide transportation talks. But my plan right now, and this is where I'm coming to you guys for help, if you know of people, or there anything that we can do, we have to find funding by July first. Otherwise, we're going to have to start pulling back the service starting August first and shut it down by the end of August. The reason I've put that date on it is because I don't want to get too far in, and then we run it, school starts, kids rely on it, and they're using it to get to school, and then partway through the first week of September, I say, hey, sorry, you guys are on your own. So, while it does, it sounds a little grim, but we're looking for different funding, and anything that people can do to help us out with that, to try to keep this service running year by year before the county-wide transportation begins would be, would be great. That's my presentation, if there's any questions on it, or the service, or anything we're doing, yeah?
Since some of those services involves students getting to a public school, would any of the tax dollars or the millage for schools? would any of the tax dollars or the millage for schools be applied to this?
So, we've talked with Marshall Public Schools about what they can contribute. How they've worked it is, they, they buy a chunk of tokens from us. Last year, they bought eighteen-hundred dollars' worth of rides specifically for the Albion-Marshall Connector bus. So students were able to take those tokens from the schools until the school kinda ran out. We did put in to be considered under this new plan, if it were to happen, come tomorrow. But we don't know if we're gonna be involved in that, we were told there's a chance, but I'm not, I'm not relying on that at all.
You're saying you asked to be part of that, what exactly does that mean? Are you asking for tax dollars to help subsidize that?
We're asking for some sort of contribution to help us go forward. The thing that we have to be weary of, is we cannot use tax dollars from the city of Marshall to run the bus.
But if the mon, and forgive me, I'm just trying to understand this. Say that the vote does go where the students go there, all right?
Yeah.
Hypothetically, if that money go, if those students go there, money follows them, am I not correct on that?
Correct.
All right, so some of the money that follows them, could that not be used to help maintain this, so that they have access to after-school sports, and activities, and so forth?
From what I understand, it can, and it is, through the, the bus service, the, the big yellow buses. And that's what the money is, is allocated for, is for them. It's not for our service. So it's-
It's helping the students and the families.
There are other buses that they could take, they're just true.
The families have access to the yellow buses as well, if they wanna go watch-
Sometimes, yes.
My kids were in school, they didn't. The parent, with parents, we didn't, we drove in separate cars. So the, my concern is the parents that don't have cars, this is a way for them to participate with their children. So that's why I'm saying we're gonna be fair to have some of the money that involves the children go into this.
I, I agree fully, one-hundred percent. And we have been approached as well by, by the bus services to say, "We can't necessarily handle all of these students at these times during the day, will your buses be available?" I've told them I, I can help as much as I can, but until somebody tells me, "Yeah, we can support you, and yes, we can give money towards the service," there's not much that I can say.
And who would be doing that? Who would be telling you that? Would it be Dr. Davis, who would it be telling you that?
Well, that's who, we did approach him about being funded for the project, or for, not the project, but for the service, yes. And, it really came down to, we don't know what we're getting yet, we don't know how it's gonna happen yet, or how, where all the money's gonna break down.
No, please.
This is, this is a funding question, but it's a little about the county-wide thing. Would, would it have the same flexibility that your service has, if it, if it, where you can just go?
If we go to county-wide?
Yeah.
From what I understand, by going county-wide, it's actually gonna have more ability than the service I own right now. It's gonna be able to run within the city. It's gonna be able to, so this way, we're not taking people from Albion to go to Family Fair in Marshall. We'll actually be able to drive you to Family Fair in town. I really think it'd be the greatest thing that happens to Calhoun County, but, but like I said, we're probably at minimum two years away from that.
Now, I hear you correctly say that, that you cannot take, like, tax money from the city.
Yeah, so the way that it works, the way that we have it right now, there is a millage in Marshall that takes money towards Dial Ride, and then there is the Albion-Marshall Connector. So, everything that we do, we have to separate. So, when, when I do, when I run budget numbers, I have the Albion-Marshall Connector budget, and I have Dial Ride budget. Everything is completely split. When an Albion, when a citizen of Albion calls our dispatch, it's logged under a different book than Dial Ride. Everything is separated so far down. Just because we take that millage in Marshall, we don't wanna say, "Well, we're using your tax dollars now in Marshall to operate in Albion." It just, you know, doesn't balance out, people wouldn't like that. So, the, the thing that, getting into MDOT's, this application for MDOT, where we kinda become one big service, we can operate a little bit more freely in town, in Albion. Once we get to this fiscal year, everything's still gonna have to be separated. But the nice part is, is I can send a second bus now into Albion if I need to. I just have to make sure I separate the money properly, which isn't a big deal, I don't mind doing that. But we have to get to that point come September. So, if there's no other questions, it's, uh, here we go. My contact info. If you think of things, if you guys can help in any way, let us know what we can do. I get emails all the time of, "Here's a grant, take a look at it." I will say, it's getting harder and harder to do. There's, there's only three of us, and we also have other things, too, that are going on, so it's hard to always say, "Yeah, we can put aside time to do that." Go ahead.
If you do not receive the funding that you're seeking by July first, you will shut down in August.
We will, there's no question. Yeah, we will, what the plan is right now, if we don't get funding by July first, so that I can see that this is something that can keep going, August first, I'm gonna pull it back to three days a week. And then going into September, I'll probably just knock it down to maybe one to two days a week, or specifically only have it for medical appointments, and that's it, no other, nothing else.
If local businesses did wanna contribute, wanna, you know, for instance, one of the major, would this be a tax-deductible contribution on their part?
I am not sure if it would, that's something I could figure out, if they-
If you could figure that out, that would be very helpful.
I definitely can. Yeah, if, if businesses approached and say they would like to contribute, I will, I'll bend over backwards and jump through a hoop at the same time to figure out what we can do.
Before I approach any businesses, I'd wanna have that information.
Yeah, okay, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, if I might. Going back to your original question, Councilmember Decker, in regards to the Marshall Public Schools and support for the system, when they were applying for the grant, I did ask them to include some funding as part of their proposal to support this system, particularly because of the students' parents' parents, and their ability to have access to their educational institutions and programs. So, obviously, what they asked for wasn't the same amount that they received. I don't, I don't know yet how that's impacted, but that ask is in, and what, as Josh was indicating, I don't know what that's going to look like yet. But I think the bottom line is that we are recognizing that this service is really benefiting the residents of Albion. And Albion hasn't yet stepped up to the plate in regards to supporting the service. So I think the question before you is, in what way can we do that going forward? So, one suggestion would be to have a work session to talk about some of those options. They have an immediate need, then they have a intermediate need for the next, you know, one to two years. And, one of the considerations might be a half-mill to help support that service. And I think that is approximately forty thousand, if I recall time, when we had earlier conversation of what that would raise. And that, I mean, that's an increase, but it is, it is supporting our residents, and the residents can decide if that's something they want to have and support. But we can have that conversation in a work-study session, if you'd like.
Excuse me, Cheryl, was that the twenty-two G grant that you had asked us for?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
Yep, and just to, to clarify one thing, too, of the question that came out, of reaching out to different people for funding sources. We still do have the opportunity to reach out to private, the private funders, but right now, the scary thing for me is to go to some of those funders and say, "Would you mind putting money towards this, towards this service?" And then them saying, "Well, it might end in August, you know, I'm gonna give you ten thousand dollars for three months." So, we've hit that point now where it's hard to reach out. And there are people that are willing to put money towards it, but they're just kinda nervous that their money's gonna be kinda just tossed away, basically.
And there is a tax-deductible option, in that they can make the donation through the Albion Community Foundation, and have it designated for the service.
So, if, when the work-study, and I know we have to set that up, when would the half-mill go up for vote with the citizens if we have a work-study on that, what, when would that go up?
I'm anticipating, we could probably do it as early as the November election.
Okay. So, but that wouldn't let you know if that's getting passed in time, though?
Correct, so we would have to figure out something to get us through that first quarter of the MDOT fiscal year. So we'd be looking at that forty-four-ish thousand-dollar amount, forty-five thousand-dollar amount.
Do you feel that it would be easier for you to get contributions if they knew that there would, this proposal for an increase in, or a mill would help?
I think it would, it would help some, yeah, there, there's definitely gonna be funders that would say, "You are working towards something, and we could help you out." I think any step towards that is, is good, and that could help us out, and help with funding, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah? Thanks.
Thank you. Citizens' comments, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only, and to no more than five minutes, proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? See none?
Joe.
Yes?
I don't know if this is the right time, but there's a typo and letter H in the agenda, and I just wanted to make sure that that was included before we approve. A resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding, instead of authoring? One, one is that we're gonna approve ourselves writing this thing.
Okay, thank you, Professor.
If there is no more, we'll move on. Consent calendar, approval of regular session minutes from April eighteenth, twenty sixteen?
So moved, support.
Moved and supported, were there any questions? If not, we'll, uh, voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same, passes. Items for individual discussion. Request approval of community visioning and citizens' engagement plan.
So moved.
Support.
Questions?
Mayor and Council, I have Maria Phelps here to give a brief presentation on what the proposal is, and how we are moving forward with it in regards to our visioning for the community, and how it relates to our planning in general, and the redevelopment-ready community in particular.
Good evening, everybody, glad to see you again. So, just to be brief, I've kind of introduced you guys to the community visioning strategy, a little bit with our-
Your name and address, please.
My name's Mariah Phelps, and I, for the moment, live outside of Albion, I live in Malat, Michigan. So, that's soon to change, though. Anyways, I was here a little while ago talking about the community visioning strategy that, in conjunction with the city manager's office and the Albion EDC, we've been working on. This is, in large, a product of the RRC process, which is moving forward slowly but surely. From this process and this strategy, we hope to get a lot of input on downtown development, how we wanna see walkable cities implemented in the community of Albion, challenges and assets facing the citizens and downtown development, businesses, investors, things like that. The, and I think that you all had a copy of this maybe at some point, so you saw the tentative schedule for the events, and sort of breakdown of how those events will work. Essentially, what we wanna do is every month, for the next four to six months, have an event focusing on any number of things regarding the RRC process, and gaining, gaining community input. And in between those events, we'll have RRC community engagement focus groups to discuss the results of those events, and then how to move forward in a way that ties all the events together in the end. And the RRC steering committee has been involved since day one as well, and every other month, we're meeting with them to kind of discuss where we've been, how it, how community engagement relates to RRC, and how it's all moving together. The, the document itself is very brief, it's very succinct, it simply explains why cities should have a community engagement strategy, why it's important, and how those guiding principles within the document can lead to a unified front when approaching community engagement in the future of the city of Albion. So, assuming you've all taken a look at that, I urge you to vote in favor of passing it. And just a side note, I've got some flyers that I'm gonna leave downstairs for all of you, but our next event, in, you know, the, the next community engagement event, is gonna be May twelfth, the day of the hotel groundbreaking, it's gonna be at six PM in Washington Gardner. That is the correct date and time, unlike last time. And we're gonna talk about walkable cities, we're gonna have some local artists, food, foodies, I guess you would call them, nature enthusiasts, downtown businesses, people like that, in, in attendance to hopefully discuss how we can make Albion a more walkable community. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mariah.
There are no questions? We'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed? Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Strauss?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mary Duango?
Yes.
Bee, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-seven sidewalk exemption.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported, questions?
Just one, I guess I, I guess I gotta make a motion for, to amendment. There's just one sentence in the resolution I'd like to change, or probably to strike from it, was the, about the property owners benefited from the increase in value of individual properties in the city, and relieving them of individual burden, the individual burden of repair and replacement of the sidewalks that abut their property. Because that, that was one of the concerns I had had in, in actually asking the council to address that. So I didn't want to, uh, bestate what I think kinda caused the problem, so. Other than that, I'm, I'm fine with it, I'll try to explain what-
And, and I have no objection to that deletion. And just to summarize, we've had a couple of work sessions, talking about the two thousand and eight special assessment for the sidewalks. And when it was first envisioned, as best I can gather, I wasn't here, is that it was hoped that all of the sidewalks of the community could be either installed or fixed during that time period, because individual residents, according to our ordinances, are responsible for the condition of their sidewalks that abut their property. Since that time, as we've just heard from the assessor, our property value valuations are going down, and different things are happening. So, the amount that we anticipated receiving from the assessment has not quite been hitting the mark that we had hoped. But we wanted to be fair and offer to residents who do not currently have a sidewalk the opportunity to opt out of the assessment for this current year, because they are not in our plans. And it just seemed to be the fair and reasonable thing that we could do at this time. When the first assessment was instituted in two thousand and eight, they were given an opportunity to opt out at that time. So the city isn't obligated to make it available again, but it seemed fair and reasonable at this point to at least make that available to them. And if you go forward with that today, we are able to get that adjusted for our next tax rolls going out in July.
Yes, Maurice? Cheryl, concerning the language, was there a legal opinion from our attorney? Because of the complaints that we've had from citizens who stated they haven't had a sidewalk, et cetera, et cetera, was he involved in any of this language change?
I'll let him respond directly.
Uh, well, I, I had discussions with the city manager about what my thoughts were. I mean, the council was aware that I authored the opinion that I didn't think that the assessment that was done in two thousand and eight, the way that the assessment was set up, I don't think was, I, I get the general idea behind it, and I get the intent, but I don't think it was set up in the way that a special assessment is supposed to be set up. I think it was set up like a tax, which probably wasn't the right way to go about it. And, and in speaking with the manager, and, and working around the concerns, there were both budgetary concerns and the concerns of wanting to, uh, address these issues that these particular citizens without sidewalks are having, what I suggested to the manager was that, at a minimum, given that we've only got two years left in this assessment, is that we give those, without a sidewalk, the opportunity to be, to be- is that we give those, without a sidewalk, the opportunity to be exempted. And I think post-two thousand and eighteen, when this expires, there's a, there's a better way to go about doing this assessment that will target more specific areas and appropriately balance the costs of repairs.
So, in essence, we won't have any legal liability from citizens?
I, well, I'm not gonna say that. As I said, you're aware of my opinion on, on how the assessment was done. So, just be aware that I don't think the assessment was done properly, but I would suggest that at a minimum, we give these citizens an opportunity to be exempted because they're not deriving any direct financial benefit from the assessment at all. I mean, given that they don't have a sidewalk, they're basically guaranteed not to have that benefit, and that's what's required as part of the special assessment.
Thank you.
So, sorry.
Yes?
Thank you, so, so I, what I'm hearing, Councilman Brown suggesting in a, an amendment that will require a separate vote, if we strike that sentence, property owners benefited from the increase in value of individual properties in the city and relieving them of the individual burden of repair and replacement of the sidewalks that, that abut their property. And so, that, that clearly, if we had been in a more economically stable position in a city, that might have been true, but it clearly hasn't been true. So, I, I'm, I'm in support of striking that sentence. And then we will vote a second time on the amended.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, I motion for that amendment.
And I will second that.
Okay. Did you catch up on all that? Okay, the first roll call vote will be for the change of striking that off of the existing contract.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes.
And the second one will be approving the amendment, or the resolution as intended, my, pardon?
As amended.
As amended, correct. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Domingo?
Yes.
C, request approval of settlement agreement and release. I don't know who wants to handle what, Cheryl or the attorney?
I can.
So moved.
Per C? Obsolete, halting procedure, no, no, that's... Oh, wait, there we go. That's not it?
Well...
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Do you have your, Cheryl?
Oh, I was thinking it was a different one. I'm hunting to, um, call.
Okay, so the first one is the, the, um, the release with the former city attorney that, uh, there were some minor, there were, there, we discussed that in our executive session several weeks ago, there were some minor non-substantive changes requested that, uh, that our attorney, our labor attorney, you'll forgive me, it was, Rick Fanning was involved, I, it was, I believe it's Larry?
Poe, PLWE?
Poe is, uh, does the commercial litigation with Keller Thomas, he's fine with the changes. I, I, as you're aware, because of the conflict, I, I stayed out of it, but I obviously trust their judgment, so.
Are there any further questions of that muddy mess?
We just brought it back because obviously the council can't take action in the executive session, so that has to be a vote in open to the council.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
No.
E, request approval of settlement agreement.
This was the, uh, the second matter we discussed in executive session regarding Fanning Day. As, as I indicated to the council, I've already resolved that issue barring, you know, unforeseen circumstances. I, I, in working with planners, council, I, I agree that, um, resolve the issue without any kind of monetary liability to the city. So, I would recommend that the city accept it.
So moved.
Support.
Are there questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you.
E, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen dash twenty-eight. A resolution to establish summer internship position in the office of the city manager.
So moved.
Questions?
Mayor and council, as you just heard in the presentation in regards to the community visioning process, we, I could appreciate some support in getting these forums scheduled and organized and collecting the data and synthesizing it into a, a document. And Mariah, who was one of the students who was helping significantly with that process, is taking a summer position elsewhere. So, if I could have someone in-house to support those initiatives, it would be most helpful. So, I was asking for a paid internship position for twelve weeks of the summer to support some of these activities. And the pricing was, um, five thousand dollars to support that position.
And that's, and that's coming out of your regular budget?
Well, it would be essentially out of the general fund. We're anticipating that with some adjustments, we'll be able to accommodate that. Worst-case scenario, it would be from the fund balance, but I don't anticipate that's gonna be required.
Because it's paid, is it, is it, are you thinking it's gonna be just a, a student or a, okay. And then with the, when does, when does the, um, uh, Miracor, when does that start?
August.
I'm looking basically May through mid-July approximately.
And then what, I probably gonna ask, what's, what's the major, um, reason for, for paying? Is it just to keep, to have a student be able to survive in the summer here, or is it?
Yes, um, most of the students would otherwise be trying to get other employment, and then I would have to work around another schedule. So, if I could have somebody for a dedicated thirty hours a week to support the office, um, it would be most helpful. And I, unrelated to this, I just recently learned that, um, some of my staff support is going to be off for six weeks. So, just to have someone in the office on a regular basis to cover our front office would be very much appreciated.
Any further questions? My biggest question is, is I'm worried about where the money's coming from. It's five thousand that wasn't budgeted, and I, I know it's gonna come from someplace, but I don't know if it's gonna come from a good place. If it's for the city manager, then I think the city manager ought to take it out of her budget. Like everybody else, if you want an assistant or anything else, you take it out of your budget. Can your budget afford that?
No, it can't.
Okay. Take that in mind, that we're gonna have to come up with another five thousand dollars someplace between now and the end of the year, so, yes. Um, Cheryl, how much, uh, city obsolete property do we expect to sell?
I don't have the valuations of all of that. More significantly, though, we're anticipating from our audit that we are going to be on the positive side. So, what I'm hoping is that some of those dollars can then be allocated towards this in particular.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Would it be possible, I'm, I'm not sure if it is, but when we have the work study about the mill, could we also include the work study on this resolution and see if we can find the money and where it would come from? Can we do two things at once in a work study? And that way we can-
I would rather find it before we agree to it.
Options to be able to try to get someone in there and see where the money's coming from. Can we do both at the same time? It is a question, I wanna be supportive, but I also wanna know where the money's coming from. I think we can do both. I, I think she deserves it, I just think that we need to figure out where we get it from.
Yes. With our manpower shortages over the, the last ten years, you know, we all know that we're working with fifty percent less of, uh, our staff than we had over this time. And I call it the rainy day fund. I think we're at fifteen, we're above fifteen percent, we were somewhere near twenty-one percent. And, and she needs the help. I mean, it's a question that the office needs it, and we should, we should supply it because, you know, bush come to shove, we can always allocate it out of our rainy day fund.
I'm not objecting to her getting it out.
Well, I was saying that, but don't, please don't take it that way, I'm just supporting her.
I'm just saying that it would be something we could discuss in a study group, and then it would be something where we won't be comfortable where the money came from, that's all.
What's the, um, because school's out.
They, they, yeah, I mean-
When, so what, what's the, what's your timeframe?
Well, I have some candidates in mind, and, I mean, they're going to be making a decision on their employment soon, so.
This week.
What you could consider, and although I understand the hesitancy in regards to allocating from our fund balance, but I do believe it was closer for the general fund to thirty percent. So, a worst-case scenario would be that is where it would come from, but I am anticipating that with our amendments based on our audit, we are going to be ahead, so you won't be going into a deficit situation because of this allocation. But I would appreciate an opportunity to go forward at, at all possible with this.
And, and they're gonna be doing, can you just say it again with what you plan to have them do?
Yes, they'll be working on the citizen engagement pieces. If you recall, quite frankly, do you recall Danielle when she was with me last year, and she was instrumental in doing the town hall meetings? So, it's essentially the same function, just focused on very specific, um, community revitalization efforts and those types of conversations.
And then, just one, one other, because of the subject matter? Will we, have we, did we think about maybe talking with, um, EDC too, about maybe joint, you know?
They will definitely be working with the EDC, and I've, I've even reached out to the colleges to see if they might have some money to help support or offset this position. But in order to get it off the ground, I was just hoping to be able to at least get our allocation dedicated to it.
But can you, like I said, can you make sure we ask, ask the EDC, maybe if, if there's overlap with that, you know, because, you know, that might be... Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was saying, um, given the, the nature of it, it might be helpful to ask the, uh, the EDC if, if they would be willing to, to help in some way to-
Definitely.
You know, split it, because that would, that'd be, you know, is that something?
Well, that's why I say, if she's gonna support, or if this person's gonna support more than just the city manager, then other people ought to pay for that support, because as we get down here, we're gonna give seven thousand dollars back to the county, you know, which is gonna be another loss to us. So, we have to be watching what we're giving away and what we're doing here. I understand five thousand dollars is not a lot of money, but it is a lot of money when we're as tight as we are with the budget. But if we start using that rainy day fund for things like this, then expect more of our directors to come to us saying, hey, uh, we should be able to tap into that too, so, and that would only be fair, that would only be right. Because we're low on equipment and a lot of things that, uh, you know, we're overlooking at this time. So, uh, I would just use this very cautiously on how, you know, we're doing that. So, I, I would have felt a lot better if I'd have known there was a job description coming, so I know exactly what she's doing. And I don't have a problem with, you know, well, if I see her over here, what are you doing over here when you're supposed to be doing this? You know, but, but just to come and ask for, for that, you know, with no explanation other than I'm gonna be, you know, short, then I, I think we're opening the door for our other directors to come and say, hey, you know, I'm short people too, I'd like to take that out of the rainy day fund and, and support a, you know. So, yes? Well, in fairness, this, uh, Cheryl, she's our city manager, you know, um, I, I think that she's in a decision-making situation. We, you know, chose her to direct our ship. If department managers had a situation, they would come to her. It's not up to Councilman Barnes to tell Cheryl what and how to do. If she makes a decision and we approve it, we move forward. I'm not trying to cause any dissension here, but I think we, you know, the position was filled last year with a, with a very capable lady from France, and she did a great job, and Cheryl has stated that this is the same type of manner she wants to do with this student. And we're also highlighting our city by bringing in a, a college student to come into our city hall and, you know, learn some capable internship. It, it's more than just about the money. And from my perspective, uh, we've been doing a real good job with the budget. We, we're way ahead of, of the game, and, uh, I, I, I don't wanna see any, uh, directors coming to her, telling her what they want based on her making a decision that she has a right to bring to us. Thank you. Right now, how many people do we have off in the DPW?
It varies, please do that.
That's what I'm saying. So, I just, just want you all to understand, you know, it's not that I don't want this, I, I mean, we, we need the help, but when we have two or three people down in the DPW that are off for several weeks, why can't they come and say, hey?
They can.
I wanna do the same thing.
But they can.
Now, wait a second, now, that's not quite how Maurice just put that.
Uh, I, I'm not-
Okay, so, anyway, enough discussion on that, uh, we'll do a roll call vote?
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, you know, the way things are going on in our city, things aren't improving. And, and, and when things start to improve, you need a lot, you need more help than you have. And I, I think it should at least be discussed, uh, and, and see what we can do about giving, uh, our city manager that extra help.
Okay, that's all. You're getting the wrong impression, but that's okay, yes?
I don't think I'm getting the wrong impression, I just, I just know that when things start to improve in order to keep improvement going and, and be in the forefront of it, you need, if you can't do it all, and if you can't do it all, I mean, there's too much to be done, that, that some kind of way we need to try to find a way to come up with a buyout.
Cheryl?
Mary?
That's right, and I know that there's urgency in getting it done, but I'd really like to, I would love to see her get someone. I'd really like just a study session to find ways to do that. And that way, you know, it's not just, we can talk about it and see how to help.
Well, we already have a motion and a second on the floor, so.
Can we table it and have a study session?
Not now, because we already moved forward with the roll, or-
Motion and second.
Motion and second, and we can, you know.
You can always have it. That's your job. You have a study session, but then, then we're doing our job.
Yes, Garrett?
I guess my, I guess what I'm, the thing that I have in mind is just the, the, the timeframe. So, what, what I, what I hear the city manager saying is that, I guess, you'd need the person, when would they start?
I was anticipating late May, early June.
Okay, but the person would probably-
Probably earlier.
Yeah, and you'd probably have that application process, right?
That's what I wanted to be an appointment.
Okay. I, I get both sides, I think basically we're saying, you're right, because, you know, um, we- you know, I, I'm, I'm always nervous about the idea of taking something out of the rain, the, uh, fund balance. Um, but I do get what you're saying, because one of the things that I've had conversations about is in a better situation, we'd have an assistant city manager, so I understand, you know, the need for help. I think my, I, I think my, my recommendation to the council would be to say, um, we approve it, but then we need to make sure that we really go, because this is related to economic development, we ask the EDC to maybe go half and half, and I think that's a, a fair thing, just because of the time. I see both sides, because, you know, like, you know, it's really tight, like, so I, a couple, I don't know if it was last budget when we had the, was it the salt dispenser that went out? And how much was that, like nine, almost nine thousand, so it's like, um, I know we're like razor-thin margins and, uh, but also know that you need help. So I think, I, I'm going to vote yes, but I, I think that my request would be is if we could get, you know, maybe a half a-
And I will make every effort to see if there are other agencies, grants, or the college who are willing to offset some of the costs. It's not a large amount, but, um, the support is very impactful.
Maurice?
May I ask for a call to question on the resolution as written?
There is no support, so.
Support.
Oh, it's, it's already there.
Yeah, it's already-
I thought it was.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
No. F., Request Approval for Twenty-Sixteen Twenty-Nine Policy for Purchase of Obsolete Property to City Employees.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported, questions?
Well, Mayor and Council, if you recall, there was the ordinance that was adopted, um, I think two meetings ago. And in regards to that, um, I was asked to come up with a policy and procedure relative to the sale of the obsolete property. Um, so that is before you, for your consideration. And in the nutshell, it's aligned with the ordinance and for those items that are of no value, we're able to dispose of it. And how you identify is if it's of no value, is if you put it in the trash, nobody wants it, then it's of no value. If somebody wants it, it has some value. Um, if it's nominal value, if it's under two hundred and fifty dollars, then, um, it may, I, it may be offered to the employees, donated, discarded, or it's set for sale with or without a, um, public auction or sealed bid. If it's of limited value, that's between the valuation of two hundred and fifty dollars and two hundred and four, two thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And again, it can be first offered to city employees through a bidding process, or it may be sold directly by the city manager without public auction or sealed bid. And then again, going to the two thousand five hundred amount in which case that has a more regimented process. Part of what I was thinking, I, I do understand, and we will, we will make every effort to have items offered first to employees, but there, I wanted the flexibility, because there may be circumstances where we have an arrangement with the company to get a discount if we, um, make something available to them. So I at least wanted to have that flexibility available to us. Also, there are so many places in which you can now auction items, um, including online and, um, onsite. So I also wanted some flexibility in terms of the approaches to how we would get rid of some of these properties. Also included a, um, a disposal of property, kind of worksheet, so that we would have something to work from. The departments are already, um, itemizing those pieces. The challenge has been trying to get the valuation for some of them. Um, but we are hoping to move forward with that this summer in regards to making those items available for sale.
Yes, Cohen?
Just one suggestion that I would make in, in, um, in all of the, so prices that are listed here, I'd add decimal points, so that's two hundred and fifty dollars point zero cents. But more specifically, with, in, in item three, where it says twenty-four hundred ninety-nine dollars, we add twenty-four, it should be twenty-four ninety-nine point nine-nine. I know that sounds silly, but there is a potential to have property value. Give that dollar range there and it wouldn't fall into either one of the categories. So I would just, for purposes of specificity, I'd have the ninety-nine cents on that.
Okay.
I consider that a friendly amendment, not requiring a separate vote.
Well, I think there should be, you know, a list that always comes to the council so that you know what is being, you know, trashed and thrown away, so that somebody doesn't throw something in the trash, six months later come and say, I need a brand-new one. I think the council needs to be aware of our items that we're discarding and selling and, and just throwing away, so that we have a, an itemized list of, you know, where our property is and where it's going. So I'd like that added to that.
Okay.
So with the amendment that, uh, Cohen just suggested and, um, all inventory list to come to the council first before getting rid of, do we have a motion to accept those changes to the agreement?
So moved, report.
And we will go forward now with the motion and request that was already approved for the request of approval of Twenty-Sixteen Twenty-Nine Policy for Purchase. And that will be a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Request Approval Resolution Twenty-Sixteen Dash Thirty, A Resolution to Authorize Writing Off Utility Bills and Abatement Charges on the County's Foreclosed Properties.
So moved.
Report.
Moved and supported, questions? Yes?
This is what we do every year, right?
But normally, we don't do it in the middle of the year.
Right.
That is my question.
Actually, this is slightly different. This is related to those properties that were, um, foreclosed on by the county as opposed to the ones who owe the city obligations, that one will be coming, I think, in June. So these are the properties that were actually foreclosed on by the county for the delinquent taxes. And I think it's thirty-six or thirty-seven parcels. And sometimes it doesn't even come to your attention, because we have to write it off, we don't really have a choice. But because the dollar amount is significant, I wanted to make sure that you at least saw that, that you had that information and can vote on it. You can't really vote it down, you don't have a choice, but at least you have that information.
But those are the kinds of things that we lose.
Oh, yeah.
That's why I say we have to be very cautious on what we're spending versus what we're losing. So, um, if there is no further question, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Request Approval for Resolution Twenty-Sixteen Thirty-One, A Resolution Authorizing Memorandum of Understanding with the Calhoun County Land Bank Authority.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, questions?
Mayor and Council, if you recall, back in two thousand and nine, for those of you who were here, there was an arrangement with the Calhoun County and their land bank for the use of a garage, um, located on Austin Avenue to temporarily store some fire equipment. That arrangement had indicated that, um, the city understood that repairs were needed, in particulars, I think, installation of garage doors. And the agreement was that the county would reimburse the city up to seventy-five hundred dollars for those improvements at the time that they sold the property. They recently sold the property, the amount that, um, our receipts indicate that we invested in the building was approximately seven thousand dollars. So in the process of talking with the land bank in regards to that, a separate transaction came about, and that's relative to the hotel property, where they, the land bank owned the parcel that the subway, um, restaurant previously was located on. The land bank is entitled to fifty percent of the tax proceeds for five years for their property that they sell. So the amount that they would receive exceeds the amount that we would be getting. So it would be beneficial to the city to trade off in this situation, as well as they are writing off their, um, their right to not have the property attached to adjacent property. So if we didn't do that, then the hotel parcel cannot be on one parcel. And you can't build in Albion on split parcels. So I mean, it would be a complicated situation, so it takes those, um, factors off, off the board and we will be made whole through, um, not having to collect that on their behalf.
Questions?
What?
There goes another seven grand on top of the twenty-four that we just did.
It allows the hotel to come in.
Well, that's what I questioned, I mean, we have a contract set in here with them that, uh, you know, they're virtually tax-exempt for the next twelve years. So if they're, if the county's going to get, you know, fifty percent, fifty percent of nothing is nothing, so, you know, it's not going to cost us nothing, that's how I look at it. So this should have been something that was invaded or embedded into the motel property instead of back to the city.
Okay.
I'm just saying, once again, if there is no more questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
No. Discussion Update on Progress of Abatement Timeline of Six Hundred Block of Austin Avenue.
May I please ask for a, um, our coenforcer is, uh, sick tonight now, asking for a second on the table.
Some, I give it.
There is no vote, I guess I didn't hear what you said.
I just want to table it.
You just put it on the next agenda for-
And you can.
Okay. Because there's no vote or anything else.
No, no.
That was under-
Yeah, just take it off.
Future agenda items?
Take it off, take it off.
Okay, no problem. City Managers, report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, there's a lot of great things going on in Albion. Um, first, I want to let you know we'll be celebrating our second Albion week, the week of, of April eleventh through April twenty-first. And as Councilmember Reed had mentioned, um, Summer Dreams and Peapods programming is going to be ongoing and stepping their registration, starting, the program starts June thirteenth through August fourth. And because of our partnership with the Albion Fellows, it's going to be expanded from four weeks to eight weeks, and that's also because of our partnership with the Albion Schools to make that possible, so we really appreciate our community partners with that. And as was mentioned, the Assessors Office has had some minor upgrades, so that it looks a little bit more presentable. The, um, what was called the gag order in regards to what, um, public officials could say um, in regards to millage and other election-related items has been squashed, essentially. So the Secretary, Michigan Secretary of State is enjoined from enforcing the legislation that was passed. So, um, that allows us to talk about things at our meetings, um, that are factual, so that's very helpful for, um, public offices. The, um, there was a second advisory in regards to the railroad track work on May third through May twenty-first. Um, Albion Street will be closed at, from Chestnut to Brownswood, and Hannah will be closed at Eric Street. Um, vehicular and pedestrian detours will be posted at each location. The, um, as you know, the annexation vote is tomorrow, the polls will be opened from seven AM to eight PM. Team One Plastic, we're really pleased with their expansion. The ribbon cutting will be eleven o'clock tomorrow, and there will be a community open house on Wednesday, May eleventh, from five to seven PM, the public is invited to that one. And Albion and Calhoun County, working together, are receiving a recycling award, so I will be attending that tomorrow, that's in Plymouth, so we're really excited about that. Albion's Farmers Market will be opening on Saturday, May seventh, so that's exciting. And the French Market will be Saturday, May fourteenth, from eleven to three o'clock. And there are, they are selling the raffle tickets for their, um, Albion-focused, um, gift basket. And the tickets are two dollars, and I have tickets if you need them. And the city, um, bike rides will also start on Saturday, May fourteenth, so they'll start at ten o'clock and end up at the French Market, for those of, who are interested in participating. The Hotel Groundbreaking is May twelfth at ten-thirty at the site. And as was mentioned previously, the Citizens Forum on the Walkable Community will be also that evening, May twelfth, six o'clock, at Washington Gardner. The DDA wanted to have a, um, I called it a roundtable discussion with the local businesses to talk about some of the improvements that are going on, some of the proposals relative to the street. I'm really focusing on getting the information to the business owners. So they are having that on June ninth, and that will be at the library. And in closing, let's see. Um, I will be attending the Government Finance Officers Association Conference on May twenty-second to twenty-fifth. I received a scholarship, so it offsets the registration fees. So it makes it a little bit more affordable to be able to attend and hope to get a lot of useful information to bring back here. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, future agenda items? Yes?
I'd like to request a study group to discuss the Albion Marshall Connector and the possibility of a millage being passed, supported.
Um, we could do, not necessarily the next meeting in May, but the first meeting in June, uh, discussion item on the Albion Trust.
Oh, yeah.
Or-
Or redraft, whatever you want to call it.
Redraft, dissolution, whatever you want to call it, right?
Anything else?
I got you on the next Virginia Harlem Park. The Juneteenth celebration.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Al, we're all here, so citizens' comments. Person addressing the city councils shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes, proper form is required. Other citizens' comments this evening? Come forth with your name and your address. Preferably one at a time.
Good evening, I'm Vivian Davis, nine oh one Huntington Boulevard. I would like to say thank you to the city council. As you, as, uh, Dr. Mitchell has said, tomorrow is a big day in the city of Albion. And I would like to say thank you to the council for allowing us to use the chambers to, uh, televise one of our most contested, uh, board meetings that we have had, uh, in a long time. Uh, the words like annexation, collaboration, regionalization, and things like that have brought, uh, our community to, uh, decision-making process that, um, is going to be a determining factor in the history of Albion Public Schools. So, thank you again, um, uh, I, I think that, I think that regardless of what happens tomorrow, um, annexation or no annexation, there is going to be May fourth. And May fourth, we will be a community. May fourth, we still have to come together and function on the betterment of all of our students and all of our community people. So whatever happens, I thank you for what you have done, but I also thank you for continued collaboration and focusing on our community and making our community the best community ever for our citizens as well as our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Praise God. My name is Ruby Coates, I live at three zero nine Booth Drive. Um, I just want to say thank you. Over the weekend, we had a call to pray for the community of Albion, for the church leaders and the community, community leaders to come together as a community concerning, uh, not just the annexation, but of the, uh, what it has caused to be stirred in this atmosphere of the city of Albion. Some people are voting yea, some people are voting no, but to bring the community together and just to pray, and, and, and pray to God and seek his face and, and hear from him, amen? And so we just want to thank those that, part of the, um, uh, council members that attended- And so we just wanna thank those that, part of the council members that attended that, not just as council members, but as citizens, and we just wanted to say thank you. And a man, by the way, Bishop Dawson, he came and spoke at Breeder Life Ministries on Thursday and Friday, and I know I have five minutes, so I keep this short, on Thursday and Friday concerning occupying or occupying a region, occupational strategies. And that word occupy is interesting because it has a lot of meaning with the word annexation. God has given man authority over the land, to have dominion, to be fruitful, subdued, to replenish, to build up the land. And one of the things that he taught out of Genesis eleven, or Genesis four and eleven concerning, there is, the people were building a city and building a tower. And God said, let me come down and see what they're doing. First, he saw the building of the city and the building of the tower. So the building of the tower, they were building it up high to the heavens, but they were building it up, up for themselves. But our responsibility is to build the city. That was the first responsibility that we have, to till the land. He put man on the land to till it. And, and over the course of the last few months, I've been praying, 'cause that, that's my job as a minister, to pray and to seek the face of God. He said, if my people which are called by my name shall humble themselves, seek His face, pray, turn from their wicked ways, have to be a place of repentance, then He will heal the land. And so I've been praying. I, I've been to some of the town hall meetings, and, and I'm not ignorant, I, I, I may not be well articulated, but I'm not ignorant, I hold two master's degree, but I put that under the blood of Jesus, because it is like done to, to the Lord. But He does not require for us to be ignorant. And so there was a plea that went out to the call of prayer for the church and its leaders to repent, because judgment first starts at the house of the Lord. And the Lord sent me here today to tell the city leaders to repent, to repent of your lack of discernment, for your lack of, of voice in the city. You have been silent concerning the annexation, because if the annexation does pass, and I'm speaking on the voice of the Lord, it will be the death of the city. And you may not feel it next year, the year after, but ten years from now, generations to come, you will feel the effect of the vote for yes. And I, I understand you voted no, I watched that council meeting when I came from, from work. I understand that, but you have been silent concerning your presence, concerning your stance. I understand you voted no, I do understand that. But if the annexation does not pass, if there is a no vote, if the majority of the people vote no, you will see the glory of the latter house greater than it, it ever will be or has been. There's a, a wall picture in the next room of the Victory Park, and how the Victory Park used to look, beautiful. And if the annexation does not pass, that former glory shall come back to the city. The city shall become rebuilt, the people shall come together and work together, because education affects the whole family, the whole family. And one of the things that we, we know for sure, like Vivian Davis says, regardless of, of how the annexation goes, on May fourth, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, education does not look the same, it cannot look the same, and it will not look the same, regardless of the outcome. The education system has to be different in order to educate our children, so they can be impactful to a global society, not just today. A lot of times we look at today, but there's a tomorrow, there's a twenty years from now, there's a new generation arising. Thank you, but I come to say repent, for the kingdom of God is at hand, amen?
Good evening, Mayor Domingo, council members. I am Sheriff Matt Saxton, address nine six four seven Bellevue Road, Penfield. I wanted to stop in this evening after your last council meeting, I received an email from the mayor advising he had board approval for, to go ahead and look at numbers for law enforcement services, which we had a brief conversation, months passed, about providing those numbers if council approval. He also shared the minutes, I didn't read those minutes prior to replying to him, but it doesn't appear that there is board approval at this time, and I wanted to stop in tonight personally. I will, as I said in the past, provide law enforcement numbers if the city of Albion desires to see those, and the council approves and requests those from my office. It has been done the same way in the city of Springfield, Penfield Township, the Village of Homer, prior to city manager Kale, village manager Kale being down there. But there are options for saving funds, but I don't wanna be in a bidding war between your previous police service or your current police service. I do feel that financial times are tough, and the need is to look elsewhere. We do provide a high-quality service and have enabled cities and municipalities across this county to save funds and remain solvent as municipalities. I mean no disrespect to the mayor or the council members, but as the elected sheriff of this county, I wanna make sure I provide numbers that is requested by the city council as a whole, or a majority of the city council. And in my twenty-three years in law enforcement in Calhoun County here, the police agencies throughout the county have not worked better together than they are currently. Part of that is owed to the relationship I have with Chief Kip, Sergeant Swol. The law enforcement agencies throughout Calhoun County work well together. That was what I ran upon as sheriff and elected four years ago, to have the law enforcement agencies work better and more closely together. I, I personally know we are doing that today, and would, if the city's financial needs are there, and they fully request for law enforcement services bid, I would be happy to provide those and show what that would look like. And at this point, I thank you for your time, and again, I am always available for assistance as the need arises. Just this past month and a half, we've worked with the city of Albion on, somebody mentioned a few incidents that came along. Those incidents were handled professionally, smoothly, with multiple agencies assisting. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't make this statement. The mayor may be taking undue heat, it was I who first proposed this about two years ago. We had a city manager who spearheaded this system in Mount Pleasant. I think it's our job as a council to look into these type of endeavors, because we're elected to make decisions. I was concerned about a viability to get it done, a SWOT analysis, strength, weaknesses, and opportunities to get it done, the financial advantages to both entities. My biggest concern was the community relations analysis, looking at a precedent in other, precedent in other areas, other communities that have made this transition, and see the effects that it had on the citizens. Right now, you know, our police officers by name, they see us at the grocery store, if they see us in uniform, we know who they are. And right now, we're concerned about the relationship that a community policing with the sheriff would have, but it's up to us to make that decision to look into it, because we are moving into regional systems, whether it's a school system or sheriff department, it makes sense financially, it makes sense to broaden the community. Right now, I don't want the mayor to be taking heat for something that he just thought we should look at, because it's our jobs to, to make a short-term planning, midterm planning, and long-term planning. My first statement was that we should have Chief Kip involved in this, and I just think that the, the mayor shouldn't be looked at as though he was trying to hate people's job. That was not, my intent is not his intent, it's looking to the future. We're talking about Albion in the future, and it, it's just another situation where we have to look at sustainability. And I, I wanna thank you for coming and clarifying that, because we are a growing community, we are a progressive community, and we have, that's why we have a, a planning mission, we have to look into the future, and, and thank you for coming.
Am I under the impression you're not gonna do those numbers without some type of resolution for you then?
Yes, I, I, I think that needs to be done. I think the, the city as a whole needs to look at that, if that's an option, they wanna entertain and look at that. As I mentioned in the past, that I, I'll provide numbers if that's requested by the board as a whole, the majority of the board requesting that.
And there were no objections at the time that we did that? That was my, but that's fine, we'll bring it to a vote, if that's what you wanna do, we'll bring it to a vote.
I do.
Okay?
Thank you. Thank you.
So that'll get put on further agenda items. Are there any more comments?
Sonia Brown, seven thirteen Orchard Drive. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of the board president. Following tomorrow's election, we do as a community have to face May fourth together. So I think it's important for us all to get out tomorrow and vote our conscience, but remember on May fourth, we are still Albion, we are still a community, and we still need to work together, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Bearman, one one oh one six twenty-nine Mile Road, county commissioner. I'm here to tell you tonight, or to announce that I'm, we're gonna be starting a new program where I'm gonna start taking one student every other month to a county commissioner meeting, so they can start seeing what's going on in the county building. A lot of people don't know what a county commissioner does, and when I went up to the MAC conference, I went to a diversity in the boardroom, and it opened my eyes on a lot of things, and one of them is youth, women, minorities in the boardroom, we don't have enough of them. How do we get them there? We take them, we start introducing them, two different things going on. So the first, every other month, the first Thursday of the month, I'm gonna take one from Albion, and kids from Hope are gonna provide the person, and then I'm gonna be talking to Homer and asking them to provide one for the second, uh, the third Thursday of the month. So that's something that I'm gonna try to do, and we'll see how the first one goes, and from there, we'll go on from there. Becky, you were talking about the buses, we were talking about the buses and the students. When we made the opportunity for the collaboration with our kids going over for the high school, we have school buses that run at like four, five, and seven o'clock, so all the students could do whatever they wanted to do after school without any problems.
I was referring more to the parents being able to.
Well, and that's what I was, and then for conferences and going over for sporting goods and sporting events and things like that, they were giving tokens, and they do give tokens, for riding the bus over back, unless it's after the program, and sometimes don't you hold open if there's a game going on?
Yes.
So they open, they stay late for, if there's a game going on, so they get the tokens for that. We're one of the few communities that allow the transportation back and forth. We weren't gonna just say, you don't have transportation, you can't be with your kids.
I'm not saying that, I just wanna know if extra funds would be available because of that.
Well, and, and I don't know, I'm just trying to relay a little bit of what my understandings are on this stuff, but I know that, I, I just gave my, my telephone number to talk with them, because I do want transportation, and I know working with the Workforce Development Board, we are looking at it also, so, thank you.
Any other comments?
Jay Loomis, four oh eight West Ash Street. This is more for the audience than it is for the council. It is my pleasure and my honor tomorrow to be a poll worker at Crowell School. By all means, please get your neighbors out to vote, get everybody out to vote as you get them to the place to vote, if you wanna give them a ride, I mean, preach as much as you want, talk as much as you want, convince them to vote any way you want, but when you walk into the polling place, when you walk into Crowell School, when you walk into Tenant Hall, or when you walk into St. John's, there is no campaigning within there. Us, we the workers, we can't engage about what's gonna be talked at, and as a chairperson, we can't, or I can't allow anybody to talk about it. This is gonna sound pretty far out, but please also, I realize Albion has much school spirit, please leave your Albion Community School shirts at home, that is a form of campaigning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. There are no further, yes?
I would just say thanks to Jill Domingo tomorrow, it's gonna be a busy day for her, so, thanks for her efforts tomorrow.
All right, everybody get out and vote, and I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all very much.
Good night.